Good evening. Today is the Thursday, November seventeenth, regular Board of Education meeting. Roll call, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Bookta?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Sully?
Here.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Nickram?
Here. Alrighty, and we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, as we do with every Board meeting, we read our vision and mission statement. And our vision statement is achieving distinction in all that we do. And our mission statement reads, cultivate an inclusive, high-performing culture of growth and community. Alrighty, and do we have any submitted comments from the audience tonight?
We do not.
We do not?
I do not.
Okay. And is anyone here to make any comments at all? No? No good, Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Yes, alright. Alrighty, moving on to the consent agenda, Dr. Abbott.
Yes, as we're aware, Robert's Rules provide for a consent agenda, listing several items for approval of the Board in a single motion. Documentation concerning these items have been provided to all Board members in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review, and will then become part of the permanent record. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any Board member. This evening you have Item A, minutes of October twenty-five, twenty-twenty-two, regular meeting, and November nine, twenty-twenty-two, special meeting. Item B, personnel, of which there are no items. Item C, Board Policy thirty-one point two, the update, that is the second read this evening. Item D, authorized signer of stop, or for stop payments. Item E, Start College Now, request correction. Item F, the Behavioral Mental Health Services Agreement Addendum. Item G, gift to the, gifts to the district. This evening we have a donation from an anonymous donor in the amount of ten thousand dollars to go toward the purchase of a new playground structure at Luther Elementary, as well as a donation from Ryan McGlynn and Adrian Han in the amount of three thousand dollars to go toward the purchase of a new playground structure at Luther Elementary. Item H, budget transfer requests, and then Item I, payment of district bills, as well as the treasurer's report.
That's good, alright. Thank you, Dr. Abbott. And is anyone would like any of these pulled out for further discussion now? Alrighty. If I'm seeing anything further, we can put a, I'm sorry, that's a roll call. Have we any motion?
I so moved.
I'll second.
Alright, motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and a roll call, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. Alrighty, and moving on to item number four, course proposals for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Yes, this evening we have two reports as part of our strategic plan update. The first, Mrs. Oakley, our Director of Instruction, will come to the podium. She'll be presenting on the potential for course proposal additions and additions for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Hi.
Hi.
This evening it's my pleasure to get us started on our strategic plan update for November. And as always, we start and ground in our vision and mission, and our three goals. Tonight, the first part of our presentation specifically focuses on the new course proposals at Fort Atkinson High School. We're very excited to bring seven new course proposals and six course changes to the Board this, this evening. These course proposals all connect most intensely to the goals regarding our inclusive culture of growth, looking to be responsive to our learner and community needs in our course offerings, as well as our desire to continue to be the preferred educational option in the region through our course offerings to attract learners to Fort Atkinson High School. As I said, we have seven new course proposals and six course changes for the Board of Education consideration. All of the proposals coming to the Board this evening are grounded in the premises of, first of all, that all of these can be offered within our existing FTE, existing staffing. It's our intention that no new staffing would be added as a result of any of the course offerings or its subsequent enrollment that is being considered by the Board this evening. Secondly, we had a high priority of expanding our dual-credit and advanced placement offerings. They're a very high oper, high priority for us, as it continues to maximize our post-high school benefits for our learners. And lastly, we would say that all of these courses, should they be confirmed by the Board of Education, would be offered pending sufficient enrollment, as well as in the context of the overall budget considerations and finalizing the Fort Atkinson High School schedule annually. So I'll start first with the new courses, and I'll just go through a quick, brief explanation of each course. First new course I'd like to speak to is called Musical Theater and Small Ensemble. It's a new course in the music department, specifically offered to students who are interested in exploring solo and small group musical theater vocal performance. So very excited for that, one-credit offering. We also are looking to add the, a course called Introduction to Guitar in the instrumental music department at Fort Atkinson High School. This would be a beginning guitar class, targeting students who may not have connected to our instrumental music program as middle-schoolers or elementary students, and this would be an entry place for them to take on a new instrument that could lead to a pathway of being more connected to our other bands, or performance ensembles, or a single course that someone takes to explore an instrument as a lifelong kind of hobby. Next, we are, we are proposing a Heritage Spanish Speaker course. Heritage language learners are definitely different learners than our English students, students who speak English, who are learning a world language for the first time. So this course would be specifically targeted at those who have a proficiency in the Spanish language that was developed at a young age, and builds on those strengths, especially in the area of written language, and continues to nurture the multilingual, multilingual language development for this specific learner. Another new course that we're bringing forward is called Assessment Strategies and Study Skills. We're really excited about this offering. We've had a lot of parents ask us specifically for high school support and helping students learn how to study for assessments, as well as to manage a variety of class lows that they're in, and the executive tasks that come with being a good student and keeping everything organized, studying and being prepared for assessments. We also plan to integrate an ACT test preparation component to this course. So a really nice offering for our students to not only grow their skills, to do better on assessments in their day-to-day coursework, but have the benefit of having an ACT test prep course offered at Fort Atkinson High School in the school day. The last three new courses are two new dual-credit courses in the area of tech ed. These were previously courses that were connected. Advanced Machining and Advanced Welding used to be one course. The Madison College Course Sequence separates them. So with this separation and the new courses, students can get more credits at Madison College, as well as really determine that they can sign up to do Advanced Welding without committing to Advanced Machining, and same way if they're interested in machining but not as interested in welding. So I'm pretty excited about those new dual-credit offerings. And last of the new courses is a Social Media Market course, also a dual-credit course through Madison College, specifically as a capstone marketing course focused on social media and the presence of social media in marketing, whether that is through a business setting, or a personal or professional setting. So at this time I can answer any questions people have on those first seven offerings.
Are these courses taken at M A T C, or are they?
Nope, they take, they are taken at Fort Atkinson High School during the student's regular day, and the teacher becomes accredited through Madison College to not only have the student earn the credit, but it's transcripted credit for Madison College as well.
And is it half-credit, is that, is that a quarter of the?
Half-credit would be equivalent to half a year.
Oh, okay.
I mean, or like, half a year on an A day only, or a B day only.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate we're able to keep, keep the, expand our course offerings while keeping the same FTs.
Right.
That's really great, and expanding the dual credits, I think that's really important here for a number of students, you know, throughout our district.
Yes.
That's great.
Giving a student that leg up on wherever they're going next is such a nice opportunity. Also, we really tried to bring forward dual-credit offerings and course offerings that appeal to a wide, wide variety of career pathways, so that students have offerings in, in, in any area that is their passion area at Fort Atkinson High School.
So if I, if I listen to this properly, it was, a, a, a staff is getting credit by, by Madison College.
Yes.
What's that process look like?
Sure, so our staff has to meet certain requirements. Each course that they teach has different requirements, specifically for, sometimes it's work experience, credits beyond a bachelor's degree, credits in a bachelor's degree. The, they take the training course with the Madison College professors.
Sure.
And then they have to stay connected. It's the same assessments, the same syllabus, the same materials. Very similar to AP, except this is a even more intense space, because they're looking for reciprocity, whether it was offered at Madison College, Fort Atkinson, Fort Atkinson High School, or any other, that it's exactly the same course, because the student gets credit for that course, and then can, can proceed to that next class.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's nice dual-credit, as long as they earn a successful grade in the class, they don't have to take a test at the end to get the credit. They, they get the credit, because they took the class.
Sure. That's great, thank you.
Is there a grade requirement for them to get the credit?
I would guess it would, I, I'm not sure, but I would guess it'd be a passing grade, just like it would be at Madison College.
The grade transfers?
Yeah, the grade transfers, just like they took it at whatever school. Whatever Madison College. So I can walk us through the revised courses. Part of what the new course proposal process also does is bring forward courses that have significant revisions to make the Board aware. The first is a change in our multimedia web design two course. We're changing that course's name to Video and Digital Media Production, and also adding a dual-credit there. This dual-credit course is specific to the video production course at Madison College, so really beefing up that area of video and digital media, in addition to the web design component of that course. Our Senior Dramatic Lit course, we're going to be changing the name pending Board approval to Survey of Drama, and really pulling into a more contemporary drama balanced with those classic dramatic literature selections, to again, continue to appeal to that senior as their literature choice. Another dual-credit offering that we are offering, actually this year, is, is a substitute for our technical math course, is called Math Reasoning. Our previous ma, technical math course was a homegrown course that was highly collaborative between the tech ed area and the math area. What we learned is Madison College offers this math reasoning course as the foundational math course for all career areas that are really in those technical areas, plumbing, electrical work, construction, that this became not only appeal to those pathways, but gave them a leg up to seeking coursework at Madison College in those areas that were directly to our pathways from those CTE areas. So it just became something that would give them that extra, extra bonus after they left Fort Atkinson High School, if they were pursuing a technical area. Intermediate Algebra is a course we're very excited to offer, has a rigorous component for a teacher to be able to teach. We have a teacher that stepped forward to take eighteen credits post-masters degree in math to teach this course, through a scholarship that Madison College connected her with. This is actually the dual-credit that would go into the liberal arts transfer program at Madison College, meaning if a student goes to Madison College with the intention of later transferring to UW Madison, UW Whitewater, or any of the UW schools, this would satisfy their math requirement for a large number of their, those college pathways. So that's a really exciting senior option for us to be adding. We also will be adding Advanced Placement Precalculus. We currently teach a precalculus at the high school. Advanced Placement Precalculus is a brand-new offering for the College Board. In comparison to our current course, it's very, very similar. So students who take our precalculus course now will have the opportunity to take the AP test, have it transcripted as AP Precalculus, as well as to earn that college credit for an AP offering. We're excited to have our, this will be our third AP offering in the math department. And lastly, AP Human Geography is an existing course. However, what we're offering is the opportunity for freshmen to access this course. Previously, our first course was either US Hist, AP US History, or AP Psychology. Increasingly, schools have offered AP Human Geography to freshmen. Since Fort Atkinson has a geography requirement as part of our graduation requirements, all freshmen have to take a class currently called Global Connections. We offer Global Connections and Accelerated Global Connections. This would eliminate Accelerated Global Connections, and if students are looking for that rigorous geography course as ninth graders, they would take AP Human Geography, have their chance to take an AP, one more AP class, as well as allow our students to have that increased access to college board recognitions, which are largely based on quantity. We're finding is some of our students couldn't get the quantity to get their top, those top recognitions, because we didn't have AP accessibility until their sophomore year. So with that, I can answer any question on the revised course proposals, or any additional questions you have for me on course proposals.
So with the addition of these six, how many dual-credit classes would we have?
Well, that's a great question. Man, I should know that off the top of my head!
Well, I think the answer is many more now.
Yes.
After your resolutions.
We, we are so appreciative of our relationship with Madison College. I can definitely get the Board that information, I don't have it off the top of my head. But it, it's increasingly a viable option, regardless of what post-secondary pathway students are looking for. Students are appreciating that chance to get those credits while they're still in our school, to give them that, save the money, and also give them that heads-up into programs quicker, accessing older classes faster. It's really a slick process.
We're really excited to continue that relationship with Madison College, both here locally and beyond. I mean, as we talk about the potential for a new middle-school structure, and looking at really a sixth-through-grade fourteen campus there, I mean, that, those opportunities are, are great investments for us, I think. So I, that's probably the most exciting to come out of, out of your resolutions this evening, are those increased dual-credit opportunities.
And as a direct, a direct result of the People's Services and Special Education Coordinator, Coordinator position, Angie Salamone has been just outstanding in her work to help us connect these CTE connections and, and secure more dual-credit opportunities. It's been really a wonderful addition to this, to this work.
Do the dual-credits transfer to any other higher education schools, or do you know how that works between?
It would, sure, so it would be dependent on the school that you're leaving post-Madison College. So whatever Madison College relationship the university has would depend, because it would be treated like any other Madison College course.
Okay, so it'd be like a transfer from Madison College to wherever other?
Correct.
Higher education school.
Yep, okay.
When, when, when will these courses go into effect?
They would go into effect next fall. And we would make-
And you anticipate sufficient interest from?
We do.
The student population to take these courses?
We do. I'm gonna keep my answers really brief, Chris.
I don't know what she means.
Yeah.
I think we all remember.
No, we do. We, we met with the department chairs at the high school, as well as the full department staff. Leanne did a nice job with her staff, talking through these, making sure that there's no duplication, and there's some real excitement, especially after pausing new offerings for a couple of years because of the pandemic and other factors. It's really nice to see this much infusion of new ideas and new offerings heading into course selection in January.
For the AP Human Geography, if a kid took Accelerated Global Connections this year, could they take AP Human Geography?
Yes. We're super excited about that, because this course hasn't run, because it hadn't had sufficient enrollment, and I think it just had such intense competition at that junior, senior level. Absolutely, a student who took global, regular Global Connections as a junior, senior could take AP Human Geography and, and access it now. So we're pretty excited about that as well.
Not asking for any specific reasons.
I was waiting for the follow-up.
Done with my questions.
Amy, just for further clarification, like with advanced placement classes, you would have to take a test, as opposed to your dual-credit where you're taking those classes, and that would satisfy classes that you may have had to take within a program at Madison College?
Correct.
Did we previously have these dual-credits? I could very well just be ignorant, because my, I had, my children had different pathways. I just was not aware of the one with the Madison College ones, which is a fantastic thing.
Yeah, we, we've had different levels of them throughout the years, and have increasingly been trying to integrate as much as possible. This represents a big commitment to an increase in those dual-credits, just because families have shared that regardless of what pathway they are, having transcripted post-secondary credits to bring with you wherever you go is such a benefit. And Madison College has really opened up their dual-credit offerings to be wider than just the CTE areas where they started, and now really starting to see into their liberal arts areas, as well as, it's an exciting time for us to be as interconnected with post-secondary education, as these courses are offering us opportunity.
And while we did have offerings in the past, I think they were really perhaps under-explored. So what you're seeing this year is, is a huge commitment and effort towards really seeing where those alignments are, or where they could be, as we look to continue making improvements at the high school, so.
And in the course offerings for the high school, I mean, do we make it clear, I mean, AP, I think people have gotten used to that, but for the dual-credits, how much do we communicate that and expose those to help people understand what that means?
Yeah, that's a great question. We, in the past, many of our dual-credit opportunities were kind of buried in the description of the courses. So, for example, the tech ed course still had a dual, previous tech ed course that we're replacing had a dual-credit affiliation, but you had to kind of read the fine print, and it only was for a certain kid who took both sections. And so what we're trying to do is, as you look at these course names, we're trying to put the words "dual-credit" in, in the actual course, and on the transcript it will say DC, and we'll have a, a note on the transcript that those are, that those are post-secondary classes completed through Madison College. So trying to advertise-
Right.
But also help people understand that opportunity available to them, hoping that it connects them to a class they may not have taken otherwise, because all of a sudden it seems like an interesting option to give them a taste of what that college coursework could feel like as well.
And then at the, will the counselors at the high school also be kind of helping expose these courses to the kids that they see, you know, interested in these classes, saying, hey, by the way, this can give you credit?
Yeah, there's two ways we really promote courses at the high school. One is through the individual course areas. So often those teachers in those specific departments will help kids to say, you're in this course, the next course is, and guess what, it's dual-credit, or guess what, it's AP. So there's that course-specific promotion, and then the second part is the information that comes to families through the school counselors and through the communications. And then also at course selection night, there's components where families engage with the departments to talk about courses and which courses they're taking, to make sure that they're in the right place, in the right sequence. And we offer, we offer a lot of courses, so it's exciting that families have this many options to consider as they think about their child's four-year pathway at Fort Atkinson High School.
That's great, thank you. Alright, we have a couple motions in front of us here.
Yeah, be it resolved that the following new high school course proposals for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year be placed on the table and considered for approval at the December Board Meeting. Musical Theater and Small Ensemble, Intro to Guitar, Social Media Marketing, Dual Credit, Assessment Strategies and Study Skills, Advanced Machining, Dual Credit, Advanced Welding, Dual Credit, Inherited Speaker Spanish.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Ms. Sully, a second by Mr. Rogers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Alright, we have the, another motion in front of us here.
I can just keep reading. Be it resolved that the following revised high school course proposals be placed on the table and considered for approval at the December Board Meeting. Video and Digital Media Production, Dual Credit, Survey of Drama, Math Reasoning, Dual Credit, Intermediate Algebra, Dual Credit, AP Precalculus, and AP Human Geography.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion by Ms. Sully, and a second by Ms. Reynolds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Alrighty, and continuing on with Dr. Abbott here.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very concise, by the way.
Before I begin into the, the next portion, I did want to just thank Mrs. Oakley and Mrs. Sherrell. Mrs. Salamone was mentioned earlier, as well as the high school teachers and staff. I think that's one of those actions you just took that looks like rather compressed and concise, and there were weeks and months, and lots of meetings, and lots of time, and efforts in order to get us there. So acknowledgement certainly belongs there as well. This evening, as the second part of our strategic plan update, I'm happy to provide the Board and our community and some information related to the Wisconsin School Report Cards. They were made public just this week on Tuesday, and they fit very nicely with our primary academic goal as part of our three-goal strategic plan. That is, all schools, as well as our district, will achieve a state of Wisconsin accountability rating of significantly exceeds expectations no later than the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six report card, with evidence of annual growth. Annually, the Wisconsin Department of Instruction releases a report card on each individual public school, as well as individual public school districts. The report card measures both growth, as well as achievement, across multiple years within a building. And for more information, the community, and certainly the Board and others, can visit our website to find direct access to each of our individual schools, as well as our district school report card, or the Department of Public Instruction website, where you can find the report cards for all of the schools, all of the public schools across the state of Wisconsin. So first we have this chart, which outlines our scores on the State of Wisconsin School Report Cards for two thousand twenty-one. So as, remember, this is reflective of last year's data, which served as our baseline year for our new strategic plan, as well as the recently released two thousand twenty-two results from the first year of our strategic plan. So as we were embarking on our new plan that we put in motion just a bit more than a year ago, the two thousand twenty-one is where we were, and that was how we set that goal that I was just speaking of. And then you can see in red at the conclusion of year one. So as we say, we have four of, well, a little bit less now, four years left in our five-year plan. You'll notice that several of our schools saw some nice gains this year, and we'll talk a little bit more specifically here in just a couple of moments. There are also a number of different items to celebrate in this year's School Report Cards, and I'm notorious for encouraging others, but I'm not very good at taking what I call jump-up-and-down moments, which are those moments to celebrate the work that is paying off and the successes that we're seeing. And indeed, we have several of those in this effort this evening. A couple of, just worthy of mention, Fort Atkinson Middle School and Fort Atkinson High School were above the state average in overall percent advanced and proficient in both English and in math. District-wide, we had more students reaching the advanced level of proficiency in those standardized assessments. Also, growth in our learners exceeding state averages in many areas, especially in English at Luther, and Purdy, and math at Berry. Our points-based proficiency, which is one of the calculations we're using related to our school improvement goals, the growth was strongest in math, especially here at Luther, Berry, and then at the high school as well. We had two schools grow overall in proficiency level. Berry moved to significantly exceed expectations, which is obviously, you know, one-sixth of what we're looking for in that strategic plan goal, and we need to keep them there. And Purdy to exceeding expectations in advance in category for that elementary school last year. Also, at Fort Atkinson High School, we had the strongest ACT average score in our region, which is really something of mention, as that was a focus for us last year when we were working with juniors and others, to start really focusing on greater attention to an excess, a success, rather, with the ACT. And then also of mention, Fort Atkinson Middle School, this year is number one among all of our comparables in that we use in comparing ourselves to others. We, we were, I was trying to remember a time when we were number one before, I think we were number two, but I, I haven't done the math yet, I will look, Matt. But this year, we're very excited, Fort Atkinson Middle School really rose to the top of some very competitive schools. You're talking about Wanakee, you're talking about Manono- You're talking about Wanaquie, you're talking about Manono Grove, and that list goes on and on from there. So very exciting for many of our schools and our learning communities. The amount of time, effort, and work that goes into improving teaching and learning, as you can imagine, is, is stunning and it's, it's great when we're seeing whether significant successes or we're seeing some edges in the right direction in some of our schools. That's exactly the work that we're anxious to continue and build momentum upon. Contrary to some people's perception, the report cards are not just about a simple or single test score. The state report cards include all sorts of other information that we need to consider in our efforts to improve student learning, things like attendance, engagement, graduation, growth, and more. As I have been known to say before, there is no negating or debating the data. It's actual and it's factual and there are no ya-buts. We own our performance. We have had a pretty clear sense of where we could land with this round of school report cards for some cases, in some instances, and in some cases perhaps for more than a year. There were no surprises here. This is not new data. This is the same data, again, that we use to frame the new strategic plan, our district improvement plan, as well as each one of our schools' improvement plans. And if you recall from earlier this fall, our school improvement plans were framed in July, enacted in August, and the work began immediately at the beginning of the school year. So none of what I'm talking about tonight is creating new action tomorrow, because we've been doing this work in some cases for over a year, but in earnest with even more intimate knowledge of some of these data points over the course of the summer. So there is no need for us to change course. The new report cards are an affirmation that with our goals and improvement plans in place, we are in fact on the right course. The report cards also point to our need to see some improvement and there is a definite call to action, especially in some parts of our learning community. And as you've also heard me say more than once, we are where we are and that's okay as long as we don't stay there. We need to focus on growth, getting all, each and every one of our students to see at least a year's worth of growth for a year of their time. We simply owe that to each and every one of our kids. In some places, we didn't make that happen and in other cases, we did. Our district's and community's future rests firmly upon our ability as a school district to make that happen. This is why our five-year goal is in place and we need to continue to work toward it, to trust it, and to believe in it, in our collective ability to make that happen. It's not a matter of if it will happen, it is a matter of when. And if we do nothing different, we already know what our results will be next year when I stand before you once again. So as I'm fond of saying, and I rolled out a couple of years ago, we can, we will, and we must, and we need to do that together on behalf of each and every one of our students. And I can tell you, we have the right staff and the right team in place to make that happen. The work is underway and the work will continue. So some really nice gains and some really nice points of attention for us in, in this data in our school report cards this year. Be happy to entertain any questions that you might have on this.
Why do you think Berry did so much better than the other elementary schools?
I think all of our elementary schools saw some nice gains throughout their work this year. You also have to remember that they're all in different points over time. The other thing that's interesting with the elementary school report cards, without getting into the weeds with this, is that the way that school report cards are calculated, certain aspects have different weights in different schools than others. So whether it's based on student demographics, whether it's based on growth or achievement, some of those calculations, as you can imagine, because they're produced by the DPI, can be pretty complicated. So there's no doubt that Berry saw some very, very great success this year. Our elementary saw some nice gains as well. We have had schools pop in and out of categories before, so it's not the first time that we've seen a school there, but we're very excited that Berry landed there this year for us.
You mentioned that we had the strongest ACT average test score in the area. Can you discuss a little bit more why you think that ended up?
I, I think we paid more attention to ACT preparation last year as well as administration. While not everybody was perhaps a great fan of that work, it's not something that we had done universally. There needed to be greater attention paid to where are we getting kids ready? Where are we getting kids in the right mindset? Were we investing some time that maybe they weren't anxious to give us, but we knew we needed to? And really just sort of change course as to how we were approaching that test. The other part of the high school school report card is it's about ACT, but it's about another test that under, under ninth and 10th graders take as well. So all of the attention related to this is part of what we need to spend more care with, really came to the forefront last year. So with that sort of foundational work done last year, we are able to do some things different, as well as some things the same heading into ACT season this year at the high school, as well as that additional course that was offered for students who would potentially be sophomores next year as they continue to get themselves ready for, for that exam as well.
What's the threshold score that you need to get to get into the significantly exceeds expectations?
Generally, they're an element of 10. Last year, I don't have the, the ranking right in front of me, but generally they move in elements of 10. Last year, there was some adjustment to the meets few and meets. I think perhaps related to COVID, but perhaps also the number of schools that were falling in certain categories.
Okay, because I was trying to see if it was like that 80 number, but then it looked like the 80s in 2021 were still exceeds expectations, not significantly exceeds expectation. So, and that report card was from the 21-22 school year, correct?
It's data, it's data from the 21, from the 2021 school year.
The 2020-2021?
Don't make me get a whiteboard. It's last year's data presented this year. Let's just keep the numbers out of it.
21-22, okay. And that was the first year that the five-year strategic plan was put in place?
Yes.
Okay, so we're still kind of on that course and we saw significant growth with that plan in place?
Yeah. You know, and, and one of the things that we talked about earlier with another presentation is we've continued to hone, tweak, and adjust our school improvement structures as well. So all of our buildings have specific school improvement plans, not a one of them are the same, because it's based on the nuances of each individual building. What they were seeing is, is successes, what they were seeing is some things maybe holding them back. So one of the things I'm excited about is, A, it was less time spent on, on creating the plan, more time spent on enacting the plan, and each one of them have an identity of their own. None of, none of them are the same.
One thing that I think is always a frustration without knowing maybe all the details and nuances that go into it is, you know, thinking that we're teaching to a test. And so this takes in a lot of complexity. Do you think the report card is a fair representation, that it takes into account so many complexities of what goes on at the schools?
Wow, how much time do you have? I think, I think, I think it's far better than it has been in the past. So for those of, those of us that have been around long enough to remember the inception of school report cards, they look markedly different than they are now and I believe they've changed every single year since their inception. Some of the categories are different, some of the things are calculated differently and the list goes on and on. One of the things that I'm perhaps most excited about is the focus on individual student growth. So that category used to be about a school or a cohort's growth and now it's calculated by student. So I think the focus continues to, to drill down to where it belongs, which is how are kids doing versus how are grades or perhaps a school doing? So I appreciate that there's focus on growth as well as achievement, as well as this sort of bottom strata of kids that may have some struggles. There's an increased focus on attendance, both in daily school attendance as well as chronic absenteeism. You know, I think there's a greater balance in some of this, the, the demographic categories and how they are. So, I mean, I think they continue to improve the recipe and I, I bristle when people perhaps, generally it's when people don't like what they see that they get defensive about the test. And yes, the standardized measure is part of it. But I think in what you just saw, Mrs. Oakley roll out in robust coursework at the high school, very little of that points to getting kids ready to take a single test. That's about having a comprehensive school system that is getting at, at the needs and strengths and the desires of so many different kids. That said, we can't ignore this. This is how we communicate how our district is doing to other schools and other districts. And it's okay for us to expect a lot of our students and a lot of our staff and administrators in making sure that we're continuing to chip away at the places that we know that we can do better. So, so there's lots of celebrations here and there's also a lot of affirmation that the plans I was just talking about a few minutes ago are indeed focused in the right areas, so.
How did the COVID pandemic affect our, our grades or if it did?
Yeah, you know, I think there's a lot of, perhaps not national, but worldwide discussion about the impacts of COVID and I'm not sure that we'll ever necessarily know. You know, we can look at specific programs perhaps, we could look at individual kids. One of the other places of pride I have in under Mrs. Hollenberger's and others' leadership is the district and, and the current and past boards focused on making sure that we have supports in place for kids. So the addition of school social workers or additional counseling services or behavior interventions, like some of those are supports that unless you have kids that are in a place to learn, they're not going to learn. So I, I feel like how we've spent our ESER funds, how we've spent our staffing allocations and things have been in the right place that way. I think there are some kids that have really stumbled. I think there are some kids that have rebounded very, very quickly and I think there have, are some kids that continue to struggle. So I, I don't know that that's much of an answer for you, Mr. Rogers, but I, I just think it's, it's varied. I'm not sure it benefited most kids. But I also don't know that we should look at it impacting us infinitely in the future either. You know, at some point, we just, we are where we are and we need to move on. So, you know, let's, let's understand the present, but let's like look towards the future. The kids that we have are the kids that we have, it's not the kids that we used to have, you know, and at some point, we're getting far enough out where, as you know, I'm not diminishing any of that, but you know, let's move on.
Good.
So my last is a comment that I want to, more questions for me. I do want to comment and just thank the administration and the leaders at the schools and the staff and the teachers and everyone who's implementing the strategic plan to show this growth. I think that it's great to see in a year that we're seeing growth and that we are one-sixth of the schools into significantly exceeds expectations. It's fantastic.
Well, we've got some people that question whether or not we can do it and I'm, I think that vote of confidence is really good for some to hear, because we can do it. We need to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and moving on to item A on, under non-instruction, election results and referendum follow-up. On behalf of the school district of Fort Atkinson Board of Education, we would like to thank our residents for their consideration of the solutions presented to voters November 8th. While we are pleased that the board found one solution that meets the needs of the district, we also understand that voters felt that one option presented was not the best available. We'll utilize the next few months to continue to engage and open dialogue with community members about the opportunities and challenges we face together. In the spirit of openness and honesty, this must continue. As a board, we will continue fostering conversations with community members about the future of our local schools. After the results were announced, several residents asked, now what? The simple answer is that the needs of our students will not go away. Therefore, we must return to the drawing board and develop a new solution that meets the needs of our students and our communities. Because of the urgency of the situation, this work will begin immediately and we begin looking at coming back in April with a solution on the ballot. We thank you again for participating in the process and for your consideration of the proposed solutions. And moving on from here, we will have a presentation.
Yeah, Mr. Demerath will come forward. As we know, he's our Director of Business Services and we have a, a few different housekeeping items this evening that Mr. Demerath will lead us through.
Thank you. So this evening, with the passage of the successful capital referendum last week, I've been working with representatives from Baird to determine the best path forward on financing the $22 million successful question. And so with me tonight, I have Brian Brewer from Baird to present the financing options and there's three resolutions then on the agenda, which he'll talk through a little bit about why they're laid out in the way they are. Brian?
Thank you, Jason. Good evening. Congratulations on your successful capital and we'll continue working on the planning and idea generation for the operational heading into next year. But tonight, as, as Jason mentioned, we've been working through different scenarios to try and implement and lock in the, the financing rates for the $22 million to fund the capital projects. And tonight, you'll have three different resolutions that effectively position, you know, Jason, Dr. Abbott and I to work with legal counsel, credit rating, try to get you in position to lock in the, the complete $22 million long-term, basically over the next, you know, 60 days. So ideally, we'll, we'll finalize the, the long-term in January. So I'll get into that here in a minute, but the, the strategy is, you know, rates have been moving higher throughout this year. I have an illustration of that. But ideally locking in, you know, and, and taking advantage of some, some federal tax benefits along the way and, you know, ultimately getting you the funding in the project account so that you can begin earning, investment earnings during that time period, which there's only two things you can do with those. One is to complete the, the referendum-approved projects and then the other is to pay down the debt. Okay? So with that, we will flip to the first page, or I guess second page. So this is a long-term interest rate chart for, this is a 20-year municipal borrowing index. So it's a daily rate. It's not, this isn't what the district will borrow, but it gives you an idea of what the general market environment and movement of interest rates have, have been. This is a 30-year snapshot on the lower portion of the page. But if you focus in on the far right in the, in the upper call-out box, that shows you the change that's happened throughout this year. So that's a pretty significant change in one year and I've been doing this since near the beginning of this chart, '96 is when I started at Baird, so. So I've seen a lot of movement throughout that time period. And you'll recall, you, you finalized your Fund 38 borrowing in '21 and those rates were, they topped out at two, like the highest rate was two. So the timing was in a, in a abnormally low, you know, post-pandemic induced interest rate environment. So we're working our way back out of that. The reason I do the 30-year view of this though, is while it is sharp and rates have moved higher this year, it's still historically speaking, a, a very favorable time to, to invest in long-term facilities and, you know, borrowing to pay for long-term facilities. So we'll flip to the next page. So this chart is one that Jason and I have spent some time talking about and, and this is really why there's three resolutions before you tonight. So bank-qualified and non-bank-qualified. So those are technical terms, but, but bank-qualified is, is a, it's the, a federal tax code allows or incentivizes banks to purchase, actively purchase debt from what they call small issuer in a, in a calendar year. So they define small issuer as 10 million or less in a calendar year and your financing is 22 million. Okay? So what we're, what we're doing with the first resolution, which is a bond anticipation note, it's to borrow on a short-term basis, think of it as a construction loan. It's a six-month note with a three-month redemption, so we'll pay it off in three months. But it'll close in 2022. And the reason for that is I want to lock in the non-bank-qualified on the short repayment in 2022, come back in January with, which is what the, the two other resolutions are, and lock in up to 10 million as bank-qualified. And you'll see on this chart, that's, that's each year of a 20-year repayment. And so the, the, the benefit of bank-qualified begins in about seven years and goes out to about 20 years. And so we're going to put the, the 10 million in year 20, 19, 18, 17, 16, kind of work our way backward to try and maximize that, that federal incentive that, that is offered to banks and then translates into anywhere. It changes- banks and then translates into anywhere, it changes week to week, but at anywhere from a 25 basis point, so a .25% to a .35%. May not sound like a whole lot in the grand scheme of things, but on $10 million over 20 years, it adds up to about anywhere between $300,000 to $400,000 of interest cost avoidance. So, if we can do that by straddling the calendar year, I, I think it would position the district to minimize interest costs and maximize investment earnings. Okay? So, the next page is a summary of, of what I just said. So, the goal is to, was to meet your, your estimated mill-rate target of $10.95, minimize total interest rate, or interest cost, minimize interest rate risk, which is why we're trying to lock in the long-term early in 2023, and then maximize investment earnings by borrowing the 22 million. You're going to take, you know, a few months to a year to spend those dollars, but you can begin investing. So, one of the benefits of rates moving higher as the Federal Reserve has raised their rate, your investment rate is also higher than it has been in the last 14 years. So, that'll, that'll be helpful there. On the right side of the page, one of the things that Jason and I will, will be working on is, is going to get an updated Moody's Investor Service credit rating. So, that's the district's credit score. Moody's is a third party that, that rates corporate entities as well as municipal entities across the country. They have rated the district's prior outstanding debt at a AA2, which, as you see on the scale in the lower left, is, is in, you know, basically two notches from the highest that they offer. So, it's a very strong credit rating, and that's a, that's a outcome of the policies and practices and procedures that you, as a board, working with Dr. Abbott and, and Jason and the team, implement month in and month out, right? And so, this is our point at which we can shine a light on that. And, and your, your fiscal, you know, your five-year trends and your growth and your fund balance levels and your, your, your minimal debt that's outstanding. So, I mean, it's all of those things that lead to a AA2. Why that matters, very similar to our own personal credit scores, the higher that score is, the better the interest rate. Like, there's more, more buyers that want to own it, and so, there's more competition for, for those bonds, which then reduces the, the overall interest cost. So, the repayment plan is a 20-year repayment. Ultimately, we're, we're structuring those first couple of years to, with the knowledge of the operational question and, and challenges, so we were toggling the, the debt repayment with the rest of the budget in your budget forecast model that, that Jason updates and presents. So, we will continue to do that and then ultimately arrive at a, a level payment after those first few years such that you know what that principal and interest payment is going forward. So, tonight, you have three resolutions. One will be for the bond anticipation note, one will be for a general obligation refunding bond, which is to pay off, so the refunding is it's paying off a portion of the bond anticipation note, not to exceed 10 million. And then, the, the final resolution is another, is the remaining general obligation refunding bond to, to pay off the bond anticipation note. So, they are what is called a parameter resolution. And so, what that is, is it'll be a not-to-exceed borrowing amount, a not-to-exceed cost rate, like interest rate, and it'll delegate the final sign-off to the president and clerk when Jason and I have worked with Tom Griggs at Griggs Law Office to get all of the paperwork ready for that review and approval. Okay? So, if we flip to the next page. This is, this is the detail of the plan that will continue to be updated, but as you work your way left to right on the page, the first column is the final payment related to the prior referendum-approved debt. The bond anticipation is the first, bond anticipation note is the first 22 million. The general obligation refunding bonds is the bank-qualified. And then, the, the $6,875 is the remaining non-bank-qualified. And you'll notice that I split the principal there. The, the longer principal maturities are, you know, the bank-qualified, so we're trying to maximize that benefit of the, of the .25 to .35. And then, the, the final amount, which is currently estimated at $6,875, will be paid off first. So, the, the principal, those will be paid off in, you know, approximately 10 years. So, you'll notice as well that long-term, if you add up the two long-term issues, it's only $16,875, and that is because of your levy to pay down debt. As you have been doing in recent years, you've been accelerating the debt retirement. And so, by paying down, by levying to pay down that debt, we are able to pay off with, with funds on hand right away approximately 5 million of the 22 million. So, you're avoiding the 20-year interest rate on that 5 million because of doing that. So, that, over time, it, depending on where we apply it, but it's, it's approximately $4 to $5 million of interest cost avoidance by having that levy to, to accelerate the debt retirement. So, the reason I bring that up is it, it just helps to put you in a fiscally stronger position as you approach your next operational discussion, as we move forward. So, in a, the, the final thought on this page is that purple section is, is the estimate of where the level payments from 2027 through 2043 would arrive. It's just shy of $1,003 on an annual basis. Okay? So, then, the final page is a sample timeline. Tonight, we're discussing and, and you have action for the, the three resolutions, the parameter resolutions. That would then direct Jason and I to continue working with Griggs Law Office, getting paperwork together, getting the credit rating together. We would look to finalize the bond anticipation note rate in the first week of December, which is when we would call the president and clerk in to review the, the numbers for that. And then, in early January, we would begin the work, or we would finalize the work on the, the general obligation refunding bonds and try to lock that in, in, in early to mid-January. So, I said a lot there, a lot of technical information, but are there any questions that I can address?
Yeah, the, the second bond issue, they are actual bonds, right? It's not really a, a note, I take it.
So, if we could flip back one, one slide? So, the, you're, you're referencing the $6,875?
Yeah, I guess so. The, the, the first resolution deals with borrowing money from a bank.
Yeah, so it's a, the first resolution, I, I didn't see how it was listed in there, but it should be the bond anticipation note?
Yes. So, that's a note?
Yes, that's a note.
And we get that from a bank?
You, you can get that from a bank. We, we're taking bids, but yes, that, that would, we would, the, the intent would be to see where we get the best rate for that six-month note.
And then, we will be paying that off and issuing bonds?
Correct.
And these are double-tax exempt, I assume?
Single, single in Wisconsin, they're, they're federally tax-exempt. So, it's not, so that state, they're not state tax-exempt.
What kind of instruments do we or can we invest the, the loan proceeds to maximize our earnings?
So, it'd be according to your investment policy, but, but I'm assuming that just matches Wisconsin's investment statute, which is, generally speaking, it's a direct obligations of the US government.
Fed funds and things like that?
Yeah, so Treasury, you know, Treasury notes and bonds. You can also invest in bank CDs that are federally insured by the FDIC coverage. There are also some insured CD products as well, the local, local bank CDs. But you just, you want to make sure that you have collateral backing it during that time period that it's being invested, right? So, it's a, it's a safety of funds and a, and a, you know, the rate of return on the funds is what you'll, you'll be focusing on there.
Is there a timeframe by which we have to lock in the money based on referendum? And this might not be a question you?
No, yeah, so you have up to five years to wait to borrow from a, from a, an approved resolution. But the, this strategy, this plan is locking in and effectively as fast as you can, right? So, that...
And it's a locked rate?
Correct. Once we issue the two long-term issues, the, each of those rates would be fixed for the term, and then there would be a redemption provision in there, like a date at which it could be refinanced should rates go back lower at some point, which, which the district has done with previous referendum that, you know, refinanced to lower the interest cost.
And this says 6.875, but the second res, or the third resolution, they're in order of the 22 million bank authorization note, the 10 million, and then the 8 million. So, the third one says 8 million, and this is 6.875?
Yeah, so, so it's not to exceed eight.
Okay.
I did that because I wasn't exactly sure how the toggle will happen with the principal repayment. So, there's a chance the 6,875 goes up a little bit, but it's, it's not going to be over eight. So, that's, that will be fine-tuned once we know what the 10 million amount looks like, so.
And is 20-year repayment pretty standard, or was there, like, look at different repayments of 15 or 30?
Yeah. So, state law limits it to no more than 20.
Okay.
And generally, that is decided based on what the asset is. Like, if it was equipment that would be, you know, that's, yeah, useful life of it, seven years or five years, or, you know, we wouldn't go 20. But the building envelope and the, and the, you know, facility structures that are going to last 20, that's what you're paying off last. There are, there is equipment, there is things that will run their useful life, and that would be what you would look at that you're paying off in the earlier years. So, while the aggregate is 20, you know, you're still paying down each year, you know, year one, year two, year three, year four. There's a portion of it that's being repaid.
But 20 is the maximum, but it's not more prudent, I mean, I'm sure you've run these numbers, but it's not more prudent to, like, look at 15, you get a better rate or something like that?
Yeah, and again, this, this, it's a great question, and it's a lot of scenarios that Jason and I have run. You, you have a long-range plan, and while, you know, I showed that 30-year chart, while rates are higher, they're still historically very favorable. So, we believe that locking in the 20 now, and then, as you determine what operational amount is, is allowed for in future budget cycles, you know, you can, you can pay it down quicker, right? So, again, this concept sometimes is in your, in your own mortgage, right? Like, if you have a 30-year, but you have more room in that budget to pay down, and it's more like a 15-year. Where, where you, if the market looked different than it did today, there'd be a benefit to doing a 15-year. Like, if you're committed to that payment, you, you actually, by borrowing shorter, you have a lower rate. In this environment, you really don't because it's pretty flat right now, meaning the very short rate is over four and the very long rate is over four, right? So, there's not really a benefit to lock you into a shorter plan, especially given that you have a multi-year facility plan, multi-year operational plan. I mean, that, you might as well lock this in, and then if you want to pay it quicker, you can do that like you've done before.
And when we're looking for who we're going to borrow from, we're only looking at places where we can pay down sooner without penalty?
Yeah, so, so when you sell the, the long-term bonds, it'll, the, it's generally about an eight-year redemption provision that gets you to the lowest rates in the market for, for the investors that typically look to buy, you know, single tax-exempt Wisconsin's school bonds. So, yeah, I mean, there's going to be, the shorter years won't be prepayable, but there will, each of them will have a portion that is prepayable as we move forward.
Dynamite stuff. Appreciate that.
It was all crystal clear.
All righty, any further questions? Thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
All righty, we have three resolutions in front of us, and they're quite lengthy, so we can be as read if you wish, unless Chris you...
No, no.
That was, that was pretty by the question beforehand, so. Just want to clarify that. So, we're going to go to non-instruction, item B with the resolution there, so.
So, I move to the resolution in 5B as, as stated.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Selly, a second by Mr. Rogers, and a roll call, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All righty, moving on to item C here. We have a motion in front of us here.
I'm just, I'm the motion person tonight, apparently, so. Resolution in the Agenda 5C as stated. I move to approve that.
I'll second.
A motion by Ms. Selly, a second by Ms. Bookta, and a roll call, Ms. Haas.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right, and resolution on item D tonight?
Move to approve item 5D on the agenda for tonight as stated.
Second.
All righty, we have a motion by Ms. Selly and a second by Mr. Rogers, a roll call, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All righty, moving on to the district audit report.
Yes, well, welcome Mr. Demerath back to the podium.
All right, thank you. Yes, the district audit report has been completed as of, as of June 30th of this year, and with us, we have Matt Baron from Lauterbach and Amen, our, our audit firm, to present the audit report to the board.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here to present the district's audit report for the 6/30/22 audit. I'll be presenting on two items tonight, the audit report and the management letter. In order to get us here tonight, we had a very extensive process that went a lot of the year since I last saw you. We basically kicked off again a couple of months later after we were together when I was up here last. We start with a meeting with Jason and the team with, it's called the Entrance Conference, where we go over what happened, what did happen and what is going to be happening that's significant and changes from the year prior, along with going through request materials and setting the schedule up for the rest of the audit. We then came back, did preliminary field work, where we're reviewing your major internal control cycles, your cash receipts, cash disbursements, payroll, student activities, those types of areas that we look at when we're looking at school districts to make sure that you have an adequate internal control framework in place. From there, we then came back to do field work, where we're reviewing the audit package that Jason and the team had put together for us, the trial balance, reviewing back to documents to make sure the numbers within that are adequately presented. And then, we went forward to the report-writing phase, where we go and we make sure that this audit report is in compliance with the government accounting standards to bring us here to today. Obviously, we're here today, well in advance of the deadline, so very successful, and obviously, going from year one to year two was a very successful year for this audit again. I'm going to go over some of the results from this audit. Please feel free to ask any questions as we go. We don't have to wait till the end. But we'll start with the audit report. You have them all electronically, is that kind of how we have it? So, I'll try to take us through this. I know it's a little, little wonky for me to go through the hard copy and you'd have the PDF, but we'll do the best we can here. So, go to page one of that audit report. It has the Lauterbach and Amen letterhead at the top. Looks, looks like this. We gave the district an unmodified opinion again this year. It's the highest opinion that we provide. Basically, what we were saying with that opinion is three things, that the district has, has that adequate internal control framework in place to prevent fraud, the numbers within this report are materially correct, or in other words, they are what they say they are, and third, the audit report is in compliance with the government accounting standards. From there, about three or four pages later, starting on page five, is your management discussion and analysis, what this section is a high-level narrative summary of everything that was within this audit report. So, I've been going through all 100 and whatever pages it is. You can just read in words here at the front. So, Jason does a nice job. We worked together to help put this together to give you a high level of what happened during the year. So, I'm going to be covering this. We'll also flip forward past all this, go all the way forward to page 18. Page 18 is where we get to your balance sheet of your governmental funds. So, you as a district, as a board, you put together your budget, you approve your budget at the fund level, right? So, here is the balance sheet for those. Where I'd like to look at is two numbers. Far right-hand side is your totals on page 18, second number up from the bottom. We had a total fund balance at the end of the year of 16.3 million. As far as your general fund, your main operating fund that we look at here is on the left-hand side, is a total of 14.3 million. So, how did we do this? So how did we do this year? We go forward to page 20. On page 20 is your income statement, far right-hand side again is your totals, third number up from the bottom, we had a total decrease this year of about $67,000. Ultimately, how this happened, we look at the general fund, that one had a total increase of $1.6 million. Revenues were up compared to budget specifically, and with your state and federal funding and what that came in. Obviously, some clawback then from your investment return this year is unfortunate, but that's just what it, what it is for the year. But ultimately, your expenses, though, were also under budget by about $500,000 to allow for that $1.6 million, of which you then had your significant capital projects that came from that borrowing that started last year of, through your capital projects that decreased that by $2.7 million to get us to where we ended up. As far as what we look at from here, your true financial health of the district, we compare those expenses back to the fund balance. So we're at 33% when we compare the fund balance to your expenditures of, within your general fund, which is a very healthy amount for the end of the year. Any questions about the audit report, audit report, before we talk about the management letter?
I do not.
All right, so going forward to the management letter, so what we provide with the management letter is additional information that we noted within the audit. I typically break these up into three tight, different categories. One is informational in nature, just giving you a heads up about things. Two is best practices that we see out in the industry or things we think we should, you should consider implementing. Or three is the bad one, which would be internal control issues that we found, like, that would not be a good one that we have within this report. As far as what we have this year, we have one new, and then we provide an update on the prior recommendations. So of which, we have this one new recommendation, and it is simply a informational one for a new accounting standard that we're going to be implementing for next year. It's GASB 96. It's based on your subscriptions for what you have. So you're a school, you have a lot of software-type subscriptions here. This one's going to be a bear. So we're going to be working with this one coming up very soon with Jason. This one will be kicking off over the next couple of months, trying to get, get this thing moving so we can have this implemented in advance for, we're not working on this in next summer when we're supposed to be looking at the numbers. So we'll be working at this in advance, because it's going to be a beginning-of-the-year adjustment as we go forward to next year. Unfortunately, schools lie in the June 30th window, and you just so happen to be the guinea pigs for this one. It's a luck of the draw. It's either the 1231s are the guinea pigs or the 630s. And unfortunately, the ones that got impacted the most on this one, the schools, are first. So that kind of sucks, but this is what, this is what we have to do. So we'll be working together in advance to try to make this happen. As far as what we have for prior recommendations going forward on the next page, there was two that I talked to you about last year. One was an accounting standard that related to leases that we implemented in this year that was really no impact for the district for this. You didn't have those operating leases that we needed to care about for this one. And then two was funds over budget. We had fun, three funds that went over budget this year within special revenue, school, nutrition services, and the employee benefit trusts. This is more of an update, this is a heads up for you. I know Jason provides good financial information to you, so this is not a surprise, but some places it, they do, it is a surprise for them when they don't know what the spending is. So we come in just to make sure you are aware of what happened during the year. But like I said, there's no internal control findings within this report. We have a unmodified opinion, we're here on time, and the financial health of the district is sound. So again, another very successful year here, and we obviously love working with you guys, so this was, this was great.
Thank you.
Is it an annual audit?
Yes. Every year, June 30. You have to have your, your books closed and we get started again right away. Any questions about?
We've been looking forward to GASB 96.
There's a lot of buzz.
And with the two recommendations, there's nothing of concern there, it's more of a?
Informational for you.
You know, implement this, or here's a heads up that you might want to alter this?
Correct. As far as accounting standards, obviously, there's, there's accounting standards that happen between 87 and 96. I didn't tell you about those, because you don't care about those. It's fine. They're, they're not an impact, it doesn't matter. We're trying to communicate to you the ones that really are going to be a impact, or I assumed would have been an impact. Many other districts had leases, so that one was more of an impact for some others. You guys, not so much, so it was fine. 96, though, with subscriptions, that's going to be a thing. That would be pretty surprising if you guys don't use computers and don't do things through software.
So you're recommending we get rid of technology so that we don't have to deal with?
So moved.
Don't open that door, my goodness.
No.
Thanks for that.
I guess I didn't hear a second.
But I guess as far as the audit package, again, just want to commend Jason and his team. It is an outstanding amount of work that they put together for us to come in to do, to do this job. And they, the working back and forth is, commend them for all, all that they do and how quickly they respond to everything, so just want to thank them for all their hard work. The only other thing I do, would like to say is, I'd like to say hi to my daughter, Ally. She is here with her first board meeting. We're on our way right after this to head to Milwaukee for a swim meet that she swims in tomorrow. So this whole timing ended up working out amazing. So picked her up after school, we drove up here, and then made her suffer through a board meeting with me, and for her first one, and now we're going to head over to Milwaukee, so.
I, I was surprised that she put her book down to listen to your presentation, so. Perhaps, maybe it wasn't the content, I don't, I'm not sure she's, you know, she's into it.
I just think she's going to be an intern before we know it.
Well, good luck at your swim meet, smile.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
All righty, school board election information. Oh, we do need a resolution, I am sorry. How did I skip that?
Be resolved at the Board of Education except the audit report for the 2021-22 fiscal year is presented by, I'm going to butcher this, Lauterbach &amp; Amen, LLP, Naperville, Illinois.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Selly, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and a roll call Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All righty, now, now we can move on to school board election information.
Yes, so for the spring election 2023, an election for the school board will be held on Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. The spring election will be for two seats on the school board. The incumbents currently holding these seats are Cory Nickram and Amy Reynolds. Anyone interested in running for these seats may contact the district superintendent and Board of Education Administrative Assistant Lisa Haas in the Luther Administration Center at 201 Park Street, or by phone at 920-563-7807, or visit the school district website at www.fordschools.org for election information. Those interested will be given election materials, including an election schedule, a WASB, WASP, is that what we say? Guide for candidates and the necessary forms. All of the information and forms are also available on our school district's website. The deadline for filing the ballot access documents, including the declaration of candidacy form and the campaign registration statement, is 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. The deadline for incumbents to file a notification of non-candidacy is 5:00 PM on Friday, December 23rd, 2022. If a primary election is needed, it will be held on Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. The election board member will take, board members, will take office on April 24th, 2023. Is that right? Election board members? The election board members, yeah.
All righty, thank you.
You're welcome.
And moving on for items for future board meetings, Dr. Abbott?
Yes, so in the future, you will see school safety drill reports, you'll see a school calendar for the next year, strategic plan update once again, nutrition services report, we'll have a financial projection and budget assess, assumptions rather, and also another authorization to dispose of equipment no longer useful to the district. Then the Wisconsin OPEB Trust Annual Review and Report, always much anticipated, the annual 4K provider contracts, and then also additional school board election information.
Fantastic. All righty, with that, we have one last resolution in front of us.
Be it resolved at the Board of Education adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Reynolds, a second by Ms. Selly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed. All righty, we are done at 7:50 PM.